Hey folks, and decent day, we're again to play a bit more of the Guild to Renaissance by Ford Studio. And in our last episode, everything was just fine. I was about to begin a courtship to marry my, my son Vessa. All the businesses were just, uh, just bringing a lot of money. And we're about to bring the whole family in politics, so we are going to advance a bit on that. Let's just resume the pace of the time and let's just see if we can do things like I wish. I might want to begin with a courtship because, uh, people are not going to remain available for long. So let's just take my son here. We're going to send him, uh, to court. I was hesitating against, uh, between Catherine Bourget and, and Blanche Bourget. And I think I'm going to go maybe for Blanche. She's scholar, it's going to be more useful to our dynasty. Plus, she has a higher title. She's a doctoral citizen, I think, something like that. And Catherine is only citizen, so it might be a difference. Uh, so let's just, let's just begin this courtship. So we are going to court, uh, Blanche Bourget. Here we go. Okay, here we go. Hopefully we'll manage to do that, but I think it was maybe an issue last time. Oh, he's running over there. So, do we have any kind of perfume? Yes, we are. Look at all these little improvements in reputation. It's really, really good. Okay, let's see if it is going to be, uh, good. Okay, seems to be the case. Let's just, uh, complete that. So we've got, uh, relationship which are, the Baratou. Okay, let's go with that. We're going to be friendly with the Baratou. Everybody wants to be friendly now. It was not the case before. Uh, let's just see, uh, courtship has begun. I just need to, where, where was she? Oh, here she is. So I think I might want to ask her to follow me. And we're going to try to, to be efficient about that. We've got, I might be better in my own tavern, so we're going to try to bring her to the purple swan. If she is following. It seems not to be the case. She's just running around. Oh no, she's following. She's not following for long, so hopefully we'll manage to bring her where we want her to be. I might want to just check if my business are running well, but it might not really be relevant. It's working pretty fine for now. I think I've got something which is being attacked. Anyway, here she is. I'm going to ask her to follow me again because I might need it. Alright. And then I will just go into this tavern and we'll try to initiate a dance or something. Come on buddy, just don't stick around. The belliff is coming already. Okay, we just need to, uh, see where, oh, here she is. And here's my son. So let's just, uh, take a look. I want to, uh, go for a dance. But let's see how it's going to make this, uh, little bar progress. It should be fine. Okay, let's get out of here. Just let them do the stuff. And meanwhile, let's just take a look. I think I've got, uh, an inventory issue. I've got my alchemist, which is full. I need to check if everything is running fine. I think I might have, uh, what's happening here? Try to fool the guide and I don't trend anymore. Not cool. I just take a look at something. Uh, let's see. Important units. Friends. We are still friends with, uh, the purple guidance, but not the yellow one, it seems. So let's just take a look. Yes, our back to being our enemy. I believe there might be something where we are colliding. I don't know what, um, I don't really have any kind of shady businesses. I've been getting rid of these a bit of time ago. I've got quite a bit of money now. I should just maybe try to, uh, increase the size of my house. How much does it cost? Okay, just a little bit too expensive for now. We'll think about it. Let's just check. Do I have still a bunch of people which are working here? Yes, and I think they might be trying to convert people. They should at least. I might want to ask them to do it manually. Just pause the game. We're going to go and send them to convert people. I've got plenty of people to convert around here. So let's go for a second one. Alright. I think it's the purpose of having so many monks. It's to convert everybody in this town to my religion. So let's just, uh, I'm going to send one in front of the, also my office as well, so I can convert important people. And I should probably just try to send, where is it? Just reading, oh, I'm not reading poetry, I'm just writing poetry. What are they? Well, let's just maybe send my guy to the script room or maybe the knave. So I can have him, uh, do a little bit of sermon here. I just bring here. Maybe it's going to be more useful. Okay, let's use a little bit of perfume, so it's going to be more efficient. Alright. Let's just, uh, begin a sermon when it's going to be done. Here we go. And we are going to, uh, praise the Bourget. Maybe it will help in our courtship. We're going to praise Blanche Bourget. I'm willing to hurry to the court. There was something happening over there, I don't remember what. But it is probably important. Oh, it is going to be the end of the day, so we might be willing to deal with it. Wait a sec, she's living. Let's just try to, can I go for another dance? Uh, it seems to be possible. It might be sufficient to give us another boost. Hey, it's progressing quite fast with, with these dances. Okay, and I'm not, uh, let's see. Do I have any kind of, let's get in. Of perfume on my character here. I should have tried to progress. Okay, let's go for a little bit of perfume. Might be useful. Alright. Going to improve my position with, uh, my friends, uh, the Calibri and maybe I could gain a bit with the guide then as well. Where is she? Oh, she, here she is. And I'm not going to resign. I'm going, I could apply for another office, but I should apply for another office. Uh, let's just, uh, apply for an office quickly. There's that one here. Hurry, it's going to be soon time. And we are going to be in trouble. I really need to be there. Alright. Hopefully it will be quick. Come on, hurry. I don't really have so much more time left. So we're going to hurry. Come on. I don't want to just rush too much because we might miss it. Okay, but just a little bit. What is she doing? Is she not doing it? Because if, if she is not doing it, I should just try to, she's not there. Where is she? Oh, here she is. Okay, let's just bring her to the other room and we'll just ask, uh, for the office next time. I don't want to fail her. Okay, let's just bring her here. I'm going maybe to speak to somebody. I could just, uh, let's see, flatter somebody. Just try to keep our good relationship with the Calibri. Except I don't have the time. It's going to begin right away. Okay, it's beginning. I don't really need to attend too much because I do not have a very good, uh, office and it's going to be done, uh, in last. So, uh, meanwhile, I will check nonetheless, but I will do it later on. It's not really, really important. But enough fruits over there. We've got, uh, do we have enough fruits in the alchemy shop as well? We've got plenty, so we're all good. The medicine shop might require, no, no need for fruits here. Uh, which, I think the tavern was also in need of, of fruits. We've got plen- kind of plenty. We'll need to bring a bit more as, as soon as possible. Just sell as much alcohol as, as possible here. Alright. I should just sell a bit of food as well. Okay, let's just do it that way. Okay. And I should maybe try to attend for a sec, just to see what I can do here. So, uh, let's see. I do not vote here. Oh, somebody died. Hope it's not one of mine. So which office is that? The post of marshal, marshal. I do not need to, uh, see that. It is not something I can vote for. And I will not be able to do anything. Alright. Let's see, let's just hurry even more. Guildmaster. Oh, nice. Didn't it? Think I might have asked for it, but I did not notice it. So we should be fine. There is not so much people which are trying to to get into poli- politics already. Okay, so I just get out of there and check. Alright, so I should just try to, uh, add more of my, uh, own family into this, into this council. There is pretty much easy access now for, to the lease master. Okay, so where is my son? He needs to, uh, keep courting Blanche. Uh, just go for another dance. She's at the, at the church. Hopefully my church, but it's not, not sure thing. Might want to check. Ah, yes, she is. So she's not too far. Is there another church around? Because he's not going the way I expect him to be going. Just check. That quickly? Okay, so what I should probably do now is to try to, uh, gain more benefits. Yet maybe my priests are doing it already. No, they're not anymore. Okay, let's just, uh, I could ask them to give a sermon here. While others are not going to, uh, be able to do it either. Okay, so pray for God blessing. Oh, interesting. Could protect my building with that. Yet there is no, not so much sabotage is around, so maybe it's not really necessary yet. There is a fire. Yep, there is always a fire. So I'm not going to pretend I care. And I failed to read the, I know which was, which was dead. Uh, okay. So I've got a bit more time, so I should probably just try to, uh, apply for a new office. Where can I apply? We've got, uh, the consulate pastor. We could go for, let's see. I should just try to go for this one. They, they might just, uh, vote for me. Okay, let's ask her to apply for an office here. I want to apply for the consulate job. And I will apply with my son. Alright. Good. Okay, meanwhile, I've got a few powers. I can, uh, inspect, uh, business. And I'm serving a bit of money for my office here. Okay, let's bring her here. I should also try to fix her. She has a minor injury. Uh, let's take a look. I could attend church. It's not the best thing I could do, but it would be fine for now. And where is my son? And how is the courtship going? Not perfect. Okay, let's see if we can send him to, um, Bagwell, Blanche. She should not be too far, hopefully. Oh, she's at church. Perfect. And I could just attend church and wait for it to open. There is quite a bit of people in my church now. Let's put up a thing a bit. It would be nice to be able to just shut down the, the cutscene like this. It's just as good like that with the little, uh, text bubbles. It's working quite fine. And let's see, I'm going to bring her to the tavern again and we're going to try to dance a bit more and hopefully it will allow us to, if not complete the courtship, advance it a bit because we are quite well right now. Maybe not. Uh, let's just get in there and let's just ask for another dance. Alright. Meanwhile, let's just check. Uh, I might have a bit of XP to spend with some character. Bargaining could be useful. Let's just take a look. Uh, oh, here she goes. So maybe more, uh, arcane knowledge. Alright, and over there we've got probably a bit more constitution or handicraft. I could just wait. Rhetoric. Rhetoric could be useful. Okay, the way dancing is all good. Oh, she's okay, we are not going to, uh, just don't let them just bother you. It's not going to help you in any way. Uh, so we did not progress with the dance, so there is probably something better to do. What if, if I was to find maybe a good gift, it would be probably easier for us to progress. Let's see what you can find on the market. And I could also try to go and, and buy a little bit of perfume in my, I don't really need to buy it. I'm just going to pick it up. I need to do the same with my other character. Uh, we've got one flask of perfume on Edana. She should use it. And I could also go and pick up another one with, with my character here. And I should also go and apply for, uh, for an office as well with maybe both my character here. The, the father and the son. It would be probably useful. Let's just take a look at my priests. There is so many things which are, uh, which require my attention. I'm failing at most, I believe. Anyway, too many shops. Uh, seven of these. I've got already, uh, two for Vessar. I'm going to bring two for Vengsar and I might want to give, uh, two more to Edana when the timing is going to be right. But meanwhile, I'll just, uh, have a vision? No, not right now. It's too, it's too early to get, to have a vision here. Okay, I need to send them, them both. I just, I don't want, I don't want the guard. I just want these two and I'm going to send them to the council. So you can apply for different job. It's a shame I'm going to go for the same, uh, I could go for the executioner office. This is far from perfect. I don't know why they are trying to bully my son, but I think because he, he might be a bit weaker. That's why. So we'll just, uh, apply for an office. We're going to go for the lease master. And then I will try to go for, uh, let's see, the executioner, uh, office. Just need to wait for the first one to be done. Alright, let's bring my son to the center of this area. He's being bullied again. Let's not let them do it. And let's just run to our the center of this town, so I can just use the perfume to, uh, make him loved a bit more. Okay, here we go. Just use that. Uh, I'm done with the office, so we should be running for both. Yes, I'm here and over there as well. Good. Meanwhile, let's just see, uh, can I go for the rest of the courtship? I could go with the complement. Maybe it's, she has no time. Why is she? Uh, maybe it's too early. Just not bother too much. I could try again, maybe. Ah, she still has no time. Alright. I've got more perfume and I'm going to try to, try to convert a bunch of people. Guild fame. Okay, nice. Alright. I completely forgot to mention it, but I learned pretty recently that the, the guild street is coming to early access on the 26th September, which is quite cool. So we'll probably just go for a place through of this, uh, new episode as soon as it is going to be released. So I need to hurry on this one if we want to be in time. But we're in a pretty decent situation already, so all good. And let's just, uh, celebrate by just upgrading the house. And what's going on? I do not have the right to level up the building, so I need to, uh, get a new title, I think. Might be the best way to deal with that. I could also try to bring my son a bit closer, so it's going to give me boost. I'm, I'm just getting so much. I do not have, I should just maybe try to, uh, switch. Are they close enough? No, they are not close enough. Just try to get closer so I can just snag this perfume. Come on. Okay, better. And I've got one already, so it's basically useless. But we are going so much better. It's very nice to be able to, uh, stack so many people at the same time. It's mostly guards though, so they might help us a bit more. Diplomatication, aggression pact. Here we go. Do we have any kind of magus which could be useful for us? Not really. Handicraft. Okay, let's see. Do we have anything to just, uh, bring? I could read a bit of poetry. Okay, let's bring my son over there. We're going to buy a bunch of things. Uh, let's go with a little bit of poetry. It's a shame to buy it. I could have just, uh, gone to my church and and just pick it up. Yet, let's try to see if poetry is going to be more efficient. I'm just, has no time. Okay, we'll do that later on, that's all. Let's just take a look at his XP in be- in between. Nothing to, uh, buy here. Uh, no here as well. We don't have enough XP point for now. Let's just ask, uh, to get fixed. Alright, we'll need to take a look at the fruits. I think I was lacking a bit of fruits in the tavern. Yes, definitely. So I should just send the cards, uh, where was it? To the alchemist. Yep, I know. I'm trying to fix that, but you are not helping. She is not available. Where is she? Where is she? She's at home and I cannot enter, I think. Catherine Bourget, uh, we've got, where is she? Oh, here she is. Oh, maybe she is, oh, she's drunk. This is why she was not available. Hopefully it will pass, but I don't think she's in a state to feel neglected because she is quite drunk. I wish she's drunk because, I don't know. I don't want to know. Let's just, um, keep going. It is their business. I'm just the middleman. Oh, what's going on here? Uh, wait, let's just pause the game for a sec. Second, just think about it. Uh, so free female citizen, edits, guide and you are really, uh, you really are the prince of idiot Vessa. How do you wish to react to this impertinent insult? Uh, I'm just going to back down. There is no reason for me to go in a duel. This character is naturally good at fighting and it's going to be a slaughter. I need to increase the charisma here. Okay, so it is, uh, craftsman, I've got. So I should maybe try to bring him to a business where he's going to be efficient at. So we've got, what do we have which could be useful? Maybe a foundry. A weaving mill. Break a tree. I could go with just a, uh, a wood cutter ad. I would be able to produce quite a bit of wood. Do we have a mine? There is a mine. It's not mine, but there is a mine. And hood should be around somewhere, around here. So I could maybe, uh, add one of these here. I'm not sure. I could be easy money. I could do it. It's going to cost me a bit though. So wood cutter ad. Is there enough space? Yeah, there is a bit of space, but it's, uh, I don't really, can I put it close to my, my other? It's not going to work well, so. I would prefer to have it close to the, um, to the city though. Okay, maybe not. It's not bad here. It's far from perfect because I'm going to be plundered quite a bit. But it's going to bring me a bit of money. And it's very easy to, to, to manage. I'm just going to ask them to sell it in the city and it's going to be, uh, working quite well. Alright, so let's see. I still need to find, she's still slipping. No, she's not. She's drinking, I think. She's drinking again. Oh, here she is. Okay, let's just, uh, bring Vessa. Let's have him hurry because she's going to get drunk and I will not be able to speak to her anymore. So let's just hurry. Here it is. A little bit of poetry. It seems not to be the right place, but it will be alright. Do we, uh, progression here? Not so much. Let's just try to go with a little bit more, uh, let's go with Bagwell, I think. It's going to be, wait a sec. I failed. Alright, and we'll try to continue with the dance. Hopefully it will be working well. Plus nine. Okay, it's not perfect. Far from it. And let's see. Uh, I'm not sure the dance are working well. Let's just try to go with this one. I'm pretty sure it's not going to work, but not, it don't work well. Minus three. Let's just try to fix that with the dance. No time. Why is, why is there no time? Come on, just don't leave. No, wait, what, what have I done? Cancel that, cancel that. It was the wrong target. Okay, so the only thing I can do is probably to find, uh, hurry over there. I should have, yes, everybody should be hurrying toward the the courts. We've got plenty of things to do here. And we don't really have, do we have any more pref- perfume? Yes, we do have a few of these. Yes, hurry over there as well. Okay, good. Meanwhile, I should just, uh, take care of my business. I've got the card from the purple swan here, which is empty. I should just send it filled with, with fruits. Alright, let's just, uh, let's see. Where was it? This one here. I just dispatched it to, uh, where was it? Um, the purple swan over there. We're going to unload, just unload. And I might want to send more. I could maybe use my cards to, uh, fill the, okay, unload and dispatch, uh, to the purple swan. This time it's going to be unload and return. Okay, perfect. So we won't need any more fruit for a while. And I've got, I don't have enough space. It's going to be trouble. Um, I wanted to buy a bit more wheat. Nice. Yet I'm still lacking space. You know what? I should just try to use one of my cards to sell all the alcohol. Maybe not all the alcohol, but a bit of the alcohol. Let's see, I need to convert people. I'm really not efficient here. Need to convert more people. I need to convert even more people. And I will also need to have somebody to make a sermon here. No, we're not getting any of that. Let's give, let's give a sermon. And we're going to, uh, praise somebody. We're going to praise, uh, Blanche Bourget. I've got still a bit of time before the beginning of the council, so we should be fine. And do we have more things to do? I've got plenty of people, uh. Well, my god, are they still protecting the place? I think they are, yes. They are still protecting the place. And this building should be done, so we should probably just try to begin to make a bit of money out of it. So I could ask this guy to, uh, oh, charcoal, I need charcoal. And I need mushrooms as well. Perfect. This is what I was in need of. Um, oh, I'm running low on money. I need to be careful. Yet I could probably just try to, just, uh, slow down a bit. We're going to, uh, take a bit of alcohol here. Alright, and we're going to send it to the market. What have I done? It's not working. And let's just try again. Why am, why am I not able to just pick up this? There is something wrong here. I can't click on anything. Okay, let's try again. Unload and return. And I think the council begins, I should just maybe go and check. Alright, here we go. So which seat are we debating today? The chief magistrate. I'm not yet concerned, but uh let's see, Michel Bourget. Are we? No, we are not voting here. Alright. I should have used the perfume here. So they are voting for Michel Bourget. It's really good for us. And next seat is going to be uh the post of marshal. Uh are we attending this one? I don't remember. Uh no, we are not. So we've got Bourget, the Calibri and the Baratelle. I would prefer uh the Bourget or the Calibri to win. It seems to be threatening the council, which is not really good. But they are still going to vote for him, so okay, Maurice Bourget is going to gain the thing. Then we've got uh the post of consul. I think I'm I'm running for this one. So we've got uh Rassio Allegra or Edana Bonas. We're going to try to uh okay, they are both voting for me. I'm going to still try to okay, it's not the right response. It's definitely not the right response. I still need to convince. Uh let's take a look. I'm going to use a perfume here. We're going to be will uh Thomas Allegra, to make him vote for somebody else. And we're going to keep alright. I'm not going to make to turn the mire, but I'm still going to uh secure these two votes. Okay, one, two, we are good. The mayor is not going to gain this one. So we've got two more offices to to secure. The higher we are going to get, the harder it's going to be uh to get us out. So the office of this master, there is one of mine as well. Okay, so we've got the King's Lace, Agrey and the Gaiden. And it seems I should just try to convince. Oh, not really going to be an issue. She's just crazy. Okay, so let's see. What's going on here? Oh, am I not voting for myself? Oh, I'm going to vote now. Uh just uh vote for for my son here. Alright, so we've got a second guy into the it into the council? He's not going to bring me much money, but there is other perks. Alright, let's see. Next one is executioner, so I'm running for this one as well. And who's voting here? Okay, we are all good here. The mayor is voting already for me. And I believe my wife should be voting for me. It would be better. Uh okay, let's vote. So we are obviously going to vote for us. It would be strange not to do so. So we've got now three members of the family which are in the council. Quite good. I'm going to uh to run for other office right away. We are getting a lot of XP as well. So let's see. Uh I need to get you see, I've got new powers here. I've got pacing gaze. I actually, I think I control the guard, the the guard of the dungeon. Let's just take a look. It is quite interesting. So do we have other powers here? I've got the poison pill, which is new, I think. I'm not completely sure about this. I'll just take a look. Uh no, it's not. It's something about uh the alchemist shop or something. And we might want to just check the other one, so. Let's take a look. I've got no special power with this one. Not cool. And I can receive development fees here. Nah, we're just going to uh go and apply for other office. Let's just keep climbing here. I might not want to climb too much. We've got two friends up there. So I'm just going to try to bring uh my two character to the uh upper state here. We've got Dungeon Master and the Master of the Guild. So it seems to be quite good office to go for. And I'm going to try to stick to this uh office with my with my third character. So I'm going to try to uh let's say, apply for an office. We're going to apply for the Master of the Guild. And my son is going to apply for the Dungeon Master. Alright. Meanwhile, I think Edana should just get out of here. She's not fixed yet. Oh, look at that. Uh oh, these are power from this uh office here. We've got throw down uh for gauntlet. Um flatter someone and make peace. So maybe I could try to make peace with uh with my enemies. Don't have so many. So let's just try to make peace with uh guidance. It might be walking. Who knows? I recovered already. Uh I cannot target my own dynasty. Not cool. Let's go to the medicus. So we need to focus on on our carpentry. And to put it in automated mode. It's not a building which is going to cost me much. Um material assistance pact with the start, why not? Meanwhile, just check and just automate this building. So automatically, alright. Production costs. Let's just go with automatic for now. I'm going to, I'm not going to let it buy and sell vehicles. It's going to sell only in the city if I don't want to be plundered. And it's going to sell everything. And I'm not going to let it employ anybody. I'm going to do it myself. And I can just go with normal investment. There is no investment to be done almost on this building, so I'm just going to do this myself and there is not so much else to be done. Lot of space, a few employers. Alright, one. Just go for the wall. Staff. And we're going to overflow the market with wood. We do not have any cards, which is not good. So I'm going to go for all scarts. The best one. And we'll sell everything we can on the market. It's not going to bring me much money, but it's going to be easy money. So we won't need to uh pay too much attention to it. Alright, meanwhile, let's just see if everything is working fine. Why do I have bandages on the cart? I don't know. I don't want to know. They are dealing with this thing. I've got, I need to make a bit of charcoal as well, if I want to be able to use it. What's happening? Uh everybody's sleeping. I should just send Vesa. He could walk on the charcoal. And I need somebody to walk on the mushroom as well. We are being attacked. No, we are not. The oh, these guys. Oh, this should be the Calibri. I'm not really sure, but it might be. Are attacking the the Fash. Oh, I forgot. I always forget that. When there is a course, uh a court in motion and you just don't pay attention to it, you lose a lot. And I need to hurry if I want to make these courts. And we are losing stuff. But maybe I should just try to go and buy a ring or two. Just to be sure that I can actually make a bunch of gifts. I just hurry, so it's going to reach this place soon. Here we go. Let's see where the guy is over there. There is not so much room here to carry stuff around. And let's see. We've got a bunch of rings here. Silver rings, not that bad. It's a decent present here, so we're going to try to go with it. Um let's see. Courtship. Just click on the guy again. I'm going to go and give a gift. Alright, a ring. Alright. Am I not doing anything? No, I'm not doing anything. It's not really a good way to use that character. Let's bring him back to the church. We might want to try to go for another sermon or something. Everything is upgraded here. Everything is upgraded here. Even the last level? I think so. Yes, it is. Okay, let's just check again. I might want to check something. Is it uh mostly automated? Because we might want to let them run things uh their way. Okay, I just go with automatic here. Because it's not really automated, even everything is manual. And we're going to add them also to probably just uh try to uh sell stuff in the city. Alright, employees. We've got all our employees done. We're going to go with uh normal investment. There is nothing else to invest, so we are fine. Maybe it will be working better. I should check on the XP, so empathy. I'm going to keep a bit of these. And I just take a look. I've got plenty of points to spend here. Uh charisma is useful. Let's go for it. And exploiter, not really. Superseller would be more useful. Yes, we're going to go with superseller. So we'll be able to sell the wood for a bit more. Uh meanwhile, did I give her the gift? I'm not sure. It seems I failed. No, I gave her the gift, but it was probably not a good gift. So we are going to try again. Let's just uh try to be will her. Why is she? Oh, she's probably drinking again. Yes. Oh, or she eating. She is eating, maybe. Oh, nice. Okay, I will do that. Yes, I know I've got too many fruits. Uh oh, maybe not. Maybe it is alchemist shop. It is alchemist shop. There is no more room for lavender. Okay, if you were too hurry, I would definitely like to spend more time dealing with other things than this courtship. And not too slow. Let's take a look. Maybe a dance this time with the right character would be good. Come on, buddy. No, let's keep her on the target staff, but we're going to go and take care of the alchemists as soon as possible. Is it increasing? Would be better. Yes. Good. Let's not lose any time. We need to initiate this uh union here. Alright, let's go and ask for end. Okay, let's see. Let's hurry. Let's go. Alright, we're going to go for the uh best option here. And let's take care of my alchemist job. So what's wrong here? I've got too many uh blackberries. I'll just sell a bunch. We need to automate the place a bit more, because I'm probably losing money here. Player, not completely. I just go with AI. I'm going to produce uh produce things. And I'm not going to trade on the map. Can I just maybe uh trade on in the shop? Do not, do not trade for now. Sell price for the goods. We're going to sell these goods here. We are not going to buy cards automatically. Uh we are not going to employ people automatically. It's going to be manual. And create some stuff. We can do that. Alright. At least they would probably just sell a bunch of things. And they are selling all the perfume, which is not what I would have liked. So let's just uh pick up all of these. We're going to drop them into the house, unload and return. I think I should have a bunch already. Yes, I've got nine. So we'll have a bit of margin here. And let's see, I should have a merge going on. Okay, I'm just in time. Let's hurry a bit. Alright, so done. Okay, buddy. Let's go back to walk. We've got uh wood to cut here. So let's just go for the charcoal. They should be walking plenty of things. Oh, they are going for the basket of mushroom, because it is quite expensive here. Good. Alright, so let's see. What should I go for now? I've got a bit of XP to spend. Yes, a bit. We're going to go for handicraft, so we're going to be much faster. I will need to increase the other stats as well. She is not fixed yet. Come on, I I've been asking uh to to get fixed for a while already. And let's see. I should probably just ask my priest to do things, because they are probably just idle. Oh, they are not. They are making what? They are I think they are making these uh Terrance of Echred. Okay, why not? I'm going to go and sell maybe a bunch of these olive water stuff. Alright. And let's see. I should also uh I had a kid to take uh okay, I'll just take to school. Alright, uh it's, I've got a big tree now. Let's see. I think it was Visha. She was going to be, uh let's see. I've got already plenty of people of each class. So what do I require the most? I'm going to go and train her uh to be what? She's already pretty tough. So she could be uh maybe a guard, uh a rock. Alright. And Blanche Bonas has gone up a level, but I don't think I control her yet, so I might not be able to uh level her up. No, I cannot. So let's go back. Even more XP to spend. I will do that later on. Uh we are now forty-eight. It's advancing slowly, but surely. Okay, so let's see. Uh we need to keep progressing into the the politics. And we'll need to wait for the next council to happen if we want to be able to do so. We are beginning to lack money, so I should just maybe try to sell a bunch of things. So let's see, how many cards do I have got? Uh three cards over there. Uh so let's just, oh, got something here. Material assistance pact. Let's go for it. Uh meanwhile, I've got alcohol to sell, I think. I do have plenty of alcohol to sell. Going to ask this cart to um go uh send and come back. I need to unload plenty of things, because I just do not have enough money and I just do not have enough space, so wait, don't leave. Alright. Let's just take a look. It's not there anymore. Come on, just bring it back here. Send. No, unload. Why? Nah, there is nothing to unload. I just pause. Fill it with stuff and we'll go back. Okay, let's just send it to the market, dispatch. Uh wait a sec, I've been doing a mistake here. I need to click again on the cards. Okay. Let's try again. Unload and return. Good. Except it's, ah, they just dropped a bit of alcohol back into the storage. Okay, it's working. I just need to maybe use the cart of the of the tavern instead. I should probably just uh bring it back. Sell it and get a better one. Okay, sell cards. Buy another one, a bigger one. Uh might want to check something. Uh three storage slot. Okay, same, but faster. All good. Okay. I'm going to assume that they are going to make profit here. Let's see. I'm going to go back to the to the market and we're going to try to convert even more people. I should also check if I can see if there is uh what kind of persons that we've got in face in the city. Alright, let's just use a bit of perfume, so everybody's going to feel better about my family. Alright, done. Then we're going to try to bring them to believe in the same god that I do. Uh you might want to check. Is there no, I don't want to change the building name. I want people broadcast. I want to check. Uh I believe it might be the Orkardist. The Orkardist should be full. Come on, too many fruits. Okay, let's see. I want to sell these uh farmer okay, both of these are for the Orkardist. So what I might want to do okay, both of these are for the old cardists. So what I might want to do is to sell this one, get a bigger one. Alright. I could even get another one, but I feel like it's just a bit of a killer. So we're going to pick up that cart here. We're going dispatch and unload to the market. Could have used a quick thing over there. And we're going just to to unload the fruits. I would have preferred to use it to do something interesting and intelligent like uh maybe making blockade on the market, but it is, I've got too many things in these. And it seems counterproductive not to produce anything else. Oh, I've got two of these. Okay, so I'm just going to sell this one. Hurry, hurry, and the third one should be a ring as well. Good. And we are going to go and maybe we should just buy another cart. Cause it's not really an issue of selling eye now, it's just an issue of selling a lot. And a second cart could be helping quite a bit. I could even go for a third one, but we'll just see about that later on. Alright, so my character should be waiting into this area. I should probably just I don't have any perfume here. No, I don't. Okay, so we'll just try to handle with that. A bit of waste. I've got still a bit of time. Nah, not worth it. Let's just try to convince them that we are good people. Let's just uh compliment uh Michel Bourget, I'm going to send my son to compliment uh Victoire Calibri, and I'm going to send my wife to, where is she? Yeah, no, no, no. Uh, let's see, she might not be too far. I'm going to send my wife oh, here she is, to compliment uh Maurice Bourget, is it Maurice? It is Pascal Calibri here, and it is obviously Maurice Bourget, but he's over there. Alright, good. Okay, money is flowing quite a bit now. Let's just try to see if we can also uh win in politics. Let's just hurry, it's going to begin in a little bit of time. Yeah, I know, I've got too much things in my storage. Okay, so the council should be beginning. Hopefully we'll be able to size uh these two offices. Got three of my people, my friends are in front of us, I've got also a bunch of friends on, on my side. The mayor should feel a little bit uh alone here. Alright, let's see, uh we're not yet sovereign, but we are just advancing slowly. Who's going to vote? Uh, Michel Bourget, Maurice Bourget, and obviously they are going to vote for the same family, so maybe we've got a new sovereign. Which is going to be Maurice Bourget. I'm not sure I'm really, I really like that, because uh, wait a sec. I need to vote here. Who do I want to vote for? Michel or Maurice? I think I should, I should vote for Michel. Alright, we're going to vote for Michel in bulk. I don't know why, but I don't feel like uh voting for Maurice. Alright, here we go. Michel Bourget, here she goes. Chief magistrate in my conscience, now the sovereign. Hope it's not going to be a mistake. Okay, let's see, which seat do we go for? Uh, chief magistrate. Alright. Next time I will be able to size uh a better seat. The post of marshal. Which candidate do we want to go for? Maurice Bourget, uh Valentin Beretot, and Victoire Calibri. If we were to vote, we might want to vote for, for Victoire Calibri. Would be a bad idea to just uh assign uh all the seats to the Bourget. I want to keep things balanced. Okay, nice. Uh, it seems they are voting for Victoire. Alright, so Maurice is out. Good for us. It is a friend, but I don't really need to have so many friends on the council. It's going to make things more difficult. Okay, so let's see, uh, what are we voting for? I'm not sure. Got Pascal Calibri and Aratio Allegra. I would prefer the Allegra to be out of the council for now. Okay, I'm not voting, so I don't really care. Let's see, the next one is going to be uh the guildmaster, so I'm applying for this one, I think. Okay, there is one candidate, so it's going to be easy. Let's just pick up this seat. And then we've got the dungeon master, and there is only, oh, there is two character here. And obviously, I'm going to vote for my son. So we've got three votes for Veyza and zero for Arnold. Come on, let's go. Good. Well done, buddy. Let's uh just vote for Veyza. Okay, so now we've got uh a few more offices to vote for. And I'm not, I'm going to be allowed to vote. But who do I want to vote if I want voting for somebody? Probably Michel. As she's a friend. So they are going to elect Alexander Bessaro. Alright. And executioner here. Okay, so Cedric Gaden maybe? Extending a lot of money here. Or maybe it's just because I'm going fast and it is the money I'm just bringing back to the, to the chest. Okay, so all good now, we've got three character in office, which is quite good. We need to keep climbing. I've got Christophe de Star to move out of the office here. So I could try to go, let's see, I should just try to go with Edana, but I'm not sure I want to push with another character for the office of Edana. So I'm just going to try to size uh the office for Edana and I will just see later on if I want to pick up the, the office of council. Let's just uh add a apply for the office of magistrate. Alright. These two here needs to go back to their business. There is plenty to do and so little time. So let's just bring uh my son back to his uh charcoal duty. Meanwhile, I'm going to go no, I'm going to go to the um the church, I believe, to do a little bit of a sermon. Okay, most of these people are sleeping, but I'm not, so let's just try to walk a bit. And I will need to pick up a bunch of these uh of this perfume as soon as I can, I'm just forgetting about these all the time. Okay, do have a bit of time, so let's just go back home. I never go back home, but let's do it today. And, oh, look at that. So maybe a little bit more charisma. And next we'll go for rhetoric, as it is a lot cheaper. And what I should also do, I've got, I don't have enough money. Let's just sell a bunch more things. I should just try to apply for a better rank. So let's just take a look, where is my old cardist here? Got you know, I'm just going to automate that. Uh, let's just take a look. Uh, AI, uh production, go for it. Uh, buying and selling cart, nope. Uh, on the world map, nope, just in the city. And, okay, seems to be good. Employing people, I'm going to go with manual investment. Okay. Let's, I should just sell things now. At least they are going to do it soon. I could add some bit. Oh, it's filled already. They're going to sell these. They're going to sell the honey and they're going to sell the, the fruits. Alright, this one is also automated, so there is probably cart which are moving around, but there is nothing to sell here. Why, why do we have bandages here? This is very strange. Let's put it in the sales stock. And, okay, I'm home. It's been a while. We've got Blanche which is here. Let's just pick up a bunch of, I've got Ferran as well. But what I need is uh perfume. Let's just take a look, uh, let's give a bunch. I should just go with more. Let's go with five. Here, going to give a bit. Let's just give a bit to everybody, not just going to use it, but as these are not characters I'm using, but if they were, it would just help us a bit. Let's give a bit to my youngest here as well. Certificate of apprenticeship. So she's done with that. Good, she will be a pretty nice captain. Or rock, would be more accurate. Okay, let's see, so Edana is done with the application. I'm going to bring her back to the, to the house, so she can pick up a bunch of, of perfume. I'm going to send my character to the market. I'm going to send, nope. Oh, look at that. Frightening. It's just too frightening. And he can control the dungeon guard. So if we go to the dungeon, which should be here, and I've been there a bit of time, we've got these guards which we can control and send to wherever we want. And they can help us and stuff. It's very, and it's not as efficient as uh being the marshal and being able to uh control all the guard of the city. But it is still a plus. Anyway, guys, I'm not going to go much further. I hope you liked the video. If you do, please leave a like, a comment or subscribe. And until next time, guys. Have fun.